I'm in my heels. Get to see the little guy. He's a seal this week.
Unless it's the part?
I guess it's.
Actually, my name is.
So if you don't have, does it have an other?
Yeah, that's.
This is what's this for?
That's.
Didn't he was a second.
So this is actually.
This was the.
Thanks, Tom. Hi. Am I gonna go over here?
I was surprised we didn't bring you my cold test. Didn't have cold.
Yeah.
Oh. I don't mind, I don't sit back, so.
Thank you very much. Yo.
Maybe, maybe the.
I actually got notes too that we have.
So maybe we don't want you to get around. We need to come now.
This sketch was submitted on this year. Ellie and then she was in our own house. And we're breaking aside a sketch. That's where the proposed. It's just that. That's one of the. Our information. More getting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's writing board meeting. I thank you for your patience with me. I'm sorry I was delayed a little bit of work. But I do thank you very much all for being here. I'm going through this. I start the meeting off correctly. Trying to introduce. Jeff Briggs. Pete Teal, I'm sorry, Harvey Teal, excuse me. John Heckman. And we are fortunate tonight to have Mr. Gilchrist stepping in for Lawrence. But we appreciate very much you taking the time to come in. And Vicki Spring over there in the corner. And Stephanie Volkland, our secretary. Thank you very much, one and all. If we can start the meeting off with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make a slight revision in tonight's agenda. People bear with me on this. We have, at the end, we have Rensselaer Plateau. But that has moved to a workshop session on the 17th or the 18th in order to. To get the SGP finalized. Would you care to say anything at this time, Jim?
I don't think I need to say anything.
Okay.
Just while. We were expecting you, you know, the workshop tonight, but, but you communicated with me today, so.
Yeah. Okay, I don't think we need to say.
Jim and I agree on something. I also expected you to be done.
That's why I sent the email a few weeks ago, I'm sorry.
It's just a couple of questions. In going through the draft minutes from your December meeting, and admittedly, I haven't seen them all. I just need to understand procedurally, you did open the public hearing on the special use permit application at your December meeting? And it. So, once the public hearings closed on the special use permit application, that that's the end of public input on the application? And at that point, it's, it's really deliberation of the board in working with the applicant, where the applicant responds to the public comments received. And the board has to review those responses to deem them fully responsive and complete. So certainly, the board can. Hold a special meeting for purposes of deliberation on the application. But if the board has closed the public hearing, then procedurally, the, the public input is, is likewise closed. Did the board establish any period for any written comments on the application?
We've taken written comments up through and through during the December meeting.
Okay.
We have a record of those.
Right, so you have a record of written public comments received and any comments made at the public hearing at the meeting. And then the board closed the public hearing at the December meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And then, at this point, it's your work. You, you deliberate on the application and you certainly have the ability to question the applicant to make sure that the applicant's fully responded to public comments received. Deliberate how you will on the application materials. Discuss any proposed conditions that are reasonably related to the application and the comments received. And then you can. But given the fact that you closed the public hearing, I wouldn't envision additional public comments on the application.
So to get additional public comment on the application, how would we proceed? Deny it and have the applicant go through the process again is pretty lengthy.
It is, and there's nothing, Stephen, in the law or as I read your code, that allows a board to reopen the public hearing or to accept additional public comment once the public hearings been closed. It is a pub meeting. The public is available to attend and observe and listen, but the period for accepting comments from the public closes when the public hearings.
Now, can we discuss further comments that were made during that meeting?
Absolutely, and that's the board job.
That was really, I think, the focus of the workshop was to address some issues.
That's correct, and that's the work of the board, to deliberate on that and to work with the applicant in terms of responding to public comments or comments or considerations of the board members. But it's not performed to accept additional comments from the public.
What the comments that were made at the, at the public hearing can be discussed.
Oh, absolutely, that's, Tom, that, that's the whole nature of the public hearing. You get comments from the public, then the applicant generally responds to those comments and the board members can deliberate on those comments received and the responses from the applicant. Certainly.
Thank you.
My notes, we close, we have a motion to close and voted it on eight eighteen.
Yes, hi. I'm Dominic Albano, I'm the attorney for RPA. Just would like to state that since we have gone through the special use permit procedure and we've gone through the requirements under your town code for meeting the recreation facility, I just want to advise you to address those requirements. And I don't, that the denial that Mr. Valenti is mentioning, I think would not be acceptable at this. Point, and I just want you to go through those requirements and then address any issues with us. And you've already had this moment in time. We've already had a moment in time for the public to state their concerns. We just want to say that if we have an attorney present to answer any questions if you need tonight.
Okay, that's why we're going to be holding a workshop meeting to discuss.
Okay. Hold on one second, sir.
I guess, talk to me like a common layman.
Sure.
What, what's the real issue with not accepting public comments at, at the workshop meeting? We can still talk between the, the parties that have issues or an opinion on it. What, does it matter if we don't actually officially accept the comments?
First of, when you have your public meeting, as I said. It's going to be open, just like intended, listen. What the law provides for in terms of accepting comments from the public on the application is the public hearing. That's, that's the mechanism to accept the public comments. And when a board closes a public hearing legally, that, that closes the period for accepting public comments. Some boards will say, we'll close the public hearing tonight, but we'll establish an additional 10-day rip comment period. And then that's clear. But closing the public hearing means we've received the public comments. We know what the comments are. You work on them, the applicant responds to them, you deliberate on how you're going to act on the application. There's no legal mechanism to, to, to take more public comment after the public hearing has been closed. And think of it from the applicant's perspective. There's got to be some process, some validity to that.
Are you advising us to make sure that the, the notice for this meeting is that it's specifically a workshop? That the public can attend?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Not.
Not the purpose of holding a workshop to deliberate on special use permit application.
Got it.
So, the reason that we're given to have this scheduled meeting is so they, they could notice it. If, if we don't need to do that now, could we, could we do our business tonight instead of?
No, no, no. Yeah, and I don't mean to, to cut you off. I know there was an issue concerning, and, and I will look at this, admittedly, I haven't yet, in terms of the initial notice of public hearing. That was addressed in your council's letter submission to the board? If you're talking about, if there was a question about notice?
No. No, what I'm saying is, we were expecting to come here and do, work with the board tonight on this. And, and Tom thought that he needed to notice the meeting and therefore push it out to the 17th or 18th. Since we don't have to do that, we don't need to notice the meeting. Can we do, can we conduct this business tonight instead of having a special meeting on the 17th or 18th or whatever?
I am not ready to discuss tonight. I don't have other board members, but I am not ready.
I mean, the most, the most concerned citizens aren't here, so.
But I, I am not ready to do it tonight.
And I'll also advise the board, your code and state law provides that on the special use permit application, when the public hearing is closed, the board needs to act within 62 days. That period is still open. And it will remain open through the 17th or 18th if you close the public hearing on December 6th. So you're timely, if you do want to schedule that special meeting for purposes of workshop deliberating on the application, it's within your statutory period to make a decision.
Thank you. What's, Tom, what's the date of our kind of meeting?
Seven. Eight, no, I believe it's the 7th, Stephen, because the 31st is a Tuesday. It's usually seven.
Is that still within 62 days of the 6th?
I'm not going to defer to someone to. Sixty-two and maybe sixty-three.
Is it 62 days?
Followed.
Just straight.
Sixty-two calendar days.
Yes, thank you. It's a Tuesday, 31st.
So, is it the 62nd or is it the 63rd day?
So what day is the 62nd? The deadline expire?
It may be the day of the February meeting, if someone tells us, or the day before the February meeting.
Okay. So, and you, this board only holds. Any board members once a month?
Yeah, first Tuesday of the month.
Is it also possible that if you have any questions tonight or in advance of the special meeting, you could provide them to me and Jim? So we could properly prepare for your meeting?
No, I thought they were the notes, the meeting notices. The questions were brought up.
So was there anything else in, besides the letter that we provided to your board that you required answering?
We haven't seen that yet.
I didn't see any.
Oh, I provided one on Friday. Are there Thursday? 30.
It's not in the package, it's not in the package. But we will, we will come back. Okay, the word is, sir, about parking or whatever things which we.
So I'll, I'll advise the board members. I do have a copy of it. The applicant's counsel did provide a letter dated December 29th. You should make sure you have that in your packet. It does respond to certain issues that were raised. Generally, if the public hearing comments are in the minutes, and it sounds like it will be here, the minutes are approved, they need to be available. Those will be the universe of the public comments received. Given that the minutes aren't available yet, I wouldn't think your December 29th submit will directly address the public comments received. Usually, the applicant will get those comments, maybe adopt, not going through in detail, but take a look at the comments in the minutes. And if there needs to be formal responses, that's within the discretion of the board, you can do a further.
Oh, okay, just the, that goes back to what Jim was saying. The reason we're here today was because we need to address those comments from the December 6th meeting. And that's why we're concerned about pushing this further down the road. And now we're having a special. Right, so which we adjust those.
We're not trying to get down the road, we're trying, we're trying to get that out. And we just ask for time to review and be able to talk with Jim and your, if you want to come, you're welcome, welcome. But we're not ready to go discuss it.
Is, is there any reason why we can't discuss some of it?
Well, we don't have their letter. I can't discuss what you're talking about.
I mean, exempting the letter. Because as far as I'm concerned, that's not really relevant. I don't need to address the letter, I'm assuming you guys can address the concerns that were raised? We can't discuss some of that? I mean, some of this stuff is, is a real issue. That isn't going to be answered in a simple letter. Has anybody been up there?
I don't, I don't know if that's.
Has anybody been up there recently? The, the parking lot? Has anybody figured out where to park it?
Yeah, they, they were gracious enough to plow it last week. And that was one point I mentioned to Jeff, and Jeff, it dropped to Jim. And that was through, there was plowing, they have bought, they have bought a plow truck for.
Parking lot in the world. It's a little bit confusing, despite the fact that I know exactly what I'm looking for. I know exactly where it is. And I know exactly the landowner who has some concerns. And I didn't know where to park, I didn't know where to drive, I didn't know what trails were. Like, there needs to be something serious done about that. Because then you drive out of it, because you're confused, because there's only like three different spots. And you realize there's signs for trails in different directions, there's parking spaces for one trail that's beyond the entrance of the park. There's a trailhead that's across from or down from the parking lot. Has anybody honestly looked at it and said, this is a? I don't want to say acceptable, but it's a clear pathway to the forest. I mean, you keep driving up this continuous dirt road and there's another spot to park for a trailhead. Why wouldn't you continue? There's no way this flies. I, I mean, in my opinion, I think we vote no and start over again, because it's not an acceptable parking lot, considering the, the issues we have with the joint land. Not even slightly. And I know exactly what I'm looking for. Now, you've taken into consideration somebody that's from either out of town or has never been there. I mean, they're going to drive anywhere up there. Whether it's up somebody's driveway, up the past, what is clearly the end of the town road, even though Google Maps says it isn't. I mean, come on. I don't. I don't understand how, I didn't read the letter, so I really can't say, but there needs to be some serious thought and there needs to be. Uh, there needs to be repercussions. Honestly, it's ridiculous.
DJ, did you post this sign there in the town road, which is fairly new? But I respectfully ask that we bring this to the workshop session?
I just, I'm throwing it out there that that gives us, we have to have an answer at the workshop, because I'm pretty sure our February meeting is day 63. I really don't know. It's 62 or 63, either way, it's outside of our, we're at the very edge of our allowable timeframe. That means we need to have an answer the night of our workshop.
Yes.
So, so if, if I can, a couple of more procedural things for the board to consider, okay? First, Steve, what you're raising is in the very nature of the board deliberation to address comments received at a public hearing. And it's in the very nature of some comments that you might want the applicant to respond to. I'll advise any board that when you make a determination to deny, any denial needs to be supported by evidence in the record. And it's not starting over again, an applicant can't simply start over again. Their relief is to go into court and challenge the board's decision. And that's a very lengthy process. You're at a point where issues have been raised, concerns may have been raised by the public, and you're in your deliberation period. And you have every right, in your discretion, to ask the applicant to address those. Next, the 62-day period. Your code does say 62 days, state law says 62 days. But there's no default approval. Respect to a special unit, if you fail to act within those 62 days. I say this from experience, because I've been in that role. It's not seeking a default approval, the law doesn't provide that. It's going into court and seeking what's called an order of mandamus to force the board to act. That likewise is a very lengthy process. What generally happens in these situations is a board will work with an applicant, because the law does say 62 days unless reasonably extended on consent of the applicant. So while you do have 62 days, if you fail to act within those 62 days, an applicant has only limited remedies, and they're not easy ones. Generally, applicants will seek to work with a board on a reasonable timeframe to get issues discussed, addressed, and hopefully resolved. Deliberations on what could be appropriate conditions and the board to act in an otherwise timely fashion. That's what I hope the board is, is looking for.
That's fine, then workshop is perfectly fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And that's what we move to.
And just in preparation for that meeting, like I said before, if you have any specific, like the parking lot, concerns that you would like us to address before the meeting and have answers to for you, we will provide those. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Does, does your letter address some of those right now?
Especially related to notice, we haven't, the parking lot issue, like.
First time we're hearing anything about that.
The parking lot issue was brought up in our meeting.
Yeah.
Could determine where the parking lot was that then.
Even, even on the map? That we provided? In the application?
It's not so much the parking lot, it's where to park.
It's, it's a reality. I mean, I know where the, I saw the map, I've been there, I know where it is. But I had trouble and my grandson, who came up there, couldn't find it either, so. And he's from, he's from North Carolina, so he has no knowledge about this area. And he couldn't find, I didn't give him a map. I just said, you know, we're up here off Leggett Bower Road. And we'll, you know, you'll see our car. Well, he didn't see our cars.
Okay, that's something.
He went up past it and then then came back and then, for some reason, so. As far as I'm concerned, it wasn't addressed, it hasn't been addressed.
Okay, so we could, we could provide a clear answer to that, so the board doesn't have any questions and move this in.
Thank you.
Tom, you want me to send my list to you? I assume, I assume it has to go through you tonight.
Please, please, Stephen, thank you, Stephen. Thank you very much.
While the applicant's here, are you going to set the special meeting date down?
The, okay, it's going to be by the 18th, if not, I'm trying to get to the 17th, because the zoning board has a meeting that normally meets on the 3rd Tuesday. And I'm not sure if they have any going on, I'd like to try and do it that day, but if not, it'll be the 18th and following day. I'm still waiting on that, we'll notify, we'll head back. All right, thank you, thank you very much.
So please, your emails right there, if you want to send whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, you also, thank you very much. Okay, next item up, we have Mr. Alley from 547, 255. And pursuing a special use permit for, for this home to be classified as a group tax. If, everyone should have a copy of the way out of the home that Mr. Alley was gracious enough to come up with. On the right-hand side of the diagram, it shows the section of the house, used to be an old, I believe, an old garage. That's. Again, Mr. Alley bought the property, he did not build it. It was built by original owner. And they had that pre- that section. They were living in it and the parents, the parents switched places, I guess. So. The dimensions are laid out for the duplex section. The separate entry is shown where it says thirty-six inch door. And it's a completely self-enclosed living or dwelling unit. There is no pass-through door between that dwelling unit and the balance of Mr. Alley's property. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. The driveway is large driveway, more than able to accommodate vehicles. The septic system, there was discussions with the Department of Health, the Department of Health. And for, four, it is large enough for four bedrooms, but there's actually only three bedrooms in the complete unit. Two in Mr. Alley's section and one bathroom in the duplex, the smaller duplex add-on section. So the Department of Health feels that it's satisfactory right now to accommodate that. There is separate electric, which we got put in to accommodate the smaller room. And there is going to be two air dressers, an A and a B, in order to differentiate for, by more than one purposes. The, okay, there was an electrical inspection and that did pass. And also Tracy Church was down there and he viewed it and guessed the one thing he said, the special use permit. And this, the duplex, the smaller duplex section of the home now was just refurbished. It had not been in service for any length of time previous to this. And the water is town water. There is no well being utilized to supply water to either section of that, of that unit, of that house.
What about septic?
The septic, that's what I was talking about, the Department of Health.
Well, it says it'll hold it, but how does it get, how do you get these bathrooms from the duplex to the main distribution trap? Have they filled it by yet? It's not, it's not on the drawing.
It's been in use in the past.
Oh, it's in the past.
It was the other one.
Thought that was a garage.
It was, okay, one time it was a garage. The original, original owner did convert that over and they the son and daughter were living in it. And then they switched over with the parents and went into the larger home. And the parents went into the smaller unit. This was going back pre, when you purchased, thousand seven. Pre two thousand seven is when they.
And there's two, there's two water systems going in? Two water. There's two, two different, two different buildings.
For each, one for each section. One line, okay? And then the same with the electric and it will be broken out into A, A. Five forty-seven A, five forty-seven B, or nine one one, to identify in case of emergency.
I have a question on the drawing, Tom. You've got thirty-six inch door here that goes into this foyer. How do you get into the apartment? Because there's a door here that goes into the main house. How do you get from the foyer into the? Okay, so this foyer is for the main house.
Exactly.
Oh, okay, okay. So it basically, it ends at this wall.
Okay.
All right, understood.
Everything ends at the wall.
Understood.
Mr. Alley has two entrances into his home. He has the main front door. And also has a small door going into the foyer.
No problem. I was a little confused about that, that part.
This goes in the house. Five forty-seven, A, twenty, group three fifty-five. In your package, with Mr. Alley's original application, there should be letters from Tracy Church in the pop-up letter discussing the Department of Health and also the electrical.
My question is, so we're okay with it? Then we have to do a public hearing, is that true?
Yes.
So he's got to come back another month?
Right, last note was just basic information. This is the first section here, we're doing the speaker. And then we'll bring, we'll bring him back in February. And we finalize it in February. Get this squared away.
Okay.
Other questions on, on your?
What's good?
Go.
You stand.
Mr. Alley, what type of roof do you have?
She goes.
Oh, I finally got it. I'm recording.
You have any questions?
Sit down. Uh, I do not. You're correct. The application's complete, special use permitted. There is a mandatory public hearing, so you have to schedule that.
We'll be moving that in February. Under February.
So will the public hearing be in February right now?
Yes.
I just, I wanted to make sure.
Yes, we are trying to move this.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, we'd like, we'd like to try and do short form environmental assessment. Does everyone have a copy of the sheet?
Do we have to do the seeker and then the public hearing?
We'll do a public hearing this year.
So Jen, you don't need to do a public hearing for seeker. What you do need, though, is, I know you have part two, it looks like, of the short EAF in front of you.
Yeah.
Do you have part one filled out by the applicant from the record?
Well, actually.
I just want to have a short long-term seeker in my training. I was listening away while I was painting. All about the differences.
Right, what was sent over, at least to me, that I have. You're going to need a part one of the short EAF filled out by the applicant.
Have to be filled out and then we would do the, we would do our part after that's been filled out.
That's really good.
That's correct. And you could certainly do both seeker and your public hearing action at the February.
So he's got to come back with his part, the first part, or part one of the short list, the short one. Short term or whatever.
The building department or the planning board, the secretaries who work with you, they're going to give you what's called the short EAF, part one, three pages. Fill that out to the best of your knowledge. Make it sign. You should do that short. So the board has it for February.
And that way, after the public hearing, we can do ours and that there's no real issues. See my training pre-draft?
All right, Mr. Alley, we'll get that form squared, we'll get it squared away and get it back in here prior to the meeting so that we can distribute it. And we'll get you squared away in February.
Should I come pick up the form?
Please.
Yes, please, sir.
Yes. Thank you, retire, Mr. Alley. I'll be too, sir. Okay. Next item? We have Steve and Jenna, we have done.
That's what we've done, so what the surveyor has done, but we're hoping, uh, this is definitely in better shape than the one we gave you first time, so. Looking around here.
Yeah. This is the proposed acre. We're trying to give you our son.
Everything in yellow, we own. And this is the town line. So you can see he stopped the property before the town line, so we're going to have to sort of, pretty much. This is a paper road. And then move on driveway and then the actual road is a little bit huge. So we have to, have to give him.
He's man up by driveway which comes here. And so then the road does start here, paper road, which will border. And we have the streets we did not acquire from the, whatever meetings we were at. So this is what we got. Hopefully it makes a lot more sense now. Okay. I would hope, I hope you're aligned. I was up there this afternoon.
Oh.
And, okay, so you turn around here and this driveway going down where you get your slum truck parked?
Yep.
Okay. And this would, and this would lead into his property?
Yeah.
Okay. So will be granted in the deed, will be granted in easement to be able to use this driveway or whatever?
Yes.
I mean, I realize it's family, but sometimes.
Sometimes they sell it.
Comes and you guys, I'm not sure that would happen, but say you decide you want to go to warmer weather, you know? And you sell your front app. How does that affect tenant or your neighbor, you know, the new?
Unfortunately for us, we're not going to warmer weather. We'll die up on that hill. That's our plan.
Well, really, because we have a daughter who's seventy. Our, our hope is that someday she'll live here and he'll live here. And she has some special needs, so we're hoping they'll take care of her. That's really like our, that's our.
That's our long-term plan.
Yeah, sure.
So the rest, the rest of the surrounding yellow that goes off to the right over there, that's still part of your words?
Yeah, some of the panel yellow with us. That's what we're trying to get out. Just pull that milk down.
And if I, I don't mean to cut you off, Tom, but to answer your question, it won't affect. Tom asked if you're going to have an easement
Yeah.
of record, even if they were to sell in unforeseen circumstances, but it could happen.
Right.
As long as it's an easement of record in that deed and they have the legal right to pass over, regardless of who owns it. That'll be in their chain of title, so that's their property.
Right, and that?
Joseph, everybody says that. What if you sell? You know, what we get.
No, you're not, you're right. Yeah, you never know.
Yeah, I mean, like our friends own the land behind us, but we make sure that our deed said that we had access to their road. Because you just, you don't know what could happen, right? And it's just, it's just to protect your guys. Protect your sons in the future. You know, it's not for any other reason, but for that.
Okay. Mr. Producer, if you remember, you are like town water?
Yes.
Okay. Where is the septic here? Am I missing something?
Uh, it's right in the front of your, there's our house. The next septic is right here on the front.
The water comes up the driveway. So we were talking to Bob Burnett and he mentioned that we might be able to put a curb stop here. And then our son could connect from there.
Because we ran too much more line up there. And he said as long as the land was flat from there, uphill, it wouldn't affect the pressure.
Yeah, and it is fairly, at least from the ice, it was flat.
Yeah, once you get up here, it's flat. That's the best piece of pretty property up there. We've got a hill behind our house. We've got the pit over there. The hill here, but he's getting it fine.
And that's why we, he suspected it's flat and it's a prime spot to build, but also because Vlad mentioned to put a curb stop here. But the power line is also right.
It's right up in here. He's literally going to have like a hundred feet to run over there with power.
Power pole right there.
And his?
For us to see it.
He should be classified, right?
It is a subdivision, one lot subdivision, mandatory public hearing. That could also be at your February meeting. Uh, they have filled out the short environmental assessment form, so that's properly in front of you. Um, that can all get addressed if the board chooses that at your February meeting. It does look to be a complete application. Application form, whatever the board does in terms of classifying the act of your seeker by all means. But there will be a public.
All right. Other questions? Other questions? Anybody else?
He made us a bunch.
Okay, at some point we will need one of those formal properties.
The outlines.
With your hand. Okay. And just, and just make sure you know where your septic. Okay, okay. No problem. And, um. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Public hearing and.
Do you think position is easy?
Yep.
There it is. Okay, if you can move that just a little bit so it can be, and they're going in the back and see what's on that.
Everybody see that right or? Don't have much more.
Right, I know, but we're just trying to get to you for everybody to see what, what you have. Thank you.
My two acre.
Um, yeah, so my name is working instead of the original two acre. Consider using a eight, four, three acre lot now instead of the original two acre lot. We're going to consider from the parcel that we're subdividing this from, I should say. And we've changed our plan to go with four duplex units, which does meet your current zoning regulation and scheduling. So we extended the area out into the wetlands of the subdivision. The wetlands, though, will still not be impacted by any of the construction that's going to go on. Pending approval. And we have also changed it having two septic systems.
So the center one that you have in there that's larger, that's going to be two sets of duplexes together? Is that what you're doing? Because I, I don't, I can't see any.
So how are you going to arrange the two acre lots for each duplex?
Now I can see it.
We're going to put all four pieces on this one lot.
Yeah, but halfway between you.
Two acres for each duplex. For each duplex.
Yes. That was my impression.
If this is our, our A, can we go back?
So on shoe heart, that would be under the plan development district or plan youth development section. Is this a PDD?
No.
Yeah. So those.
Is the turnaround area going to be adequate for your fire turnaround? I mean, they have, have one call out here on the end there. See it or not.
No.
Did you see that?
No, sir.
Cul-de-sac.
We have to turn around.
Yeah.
It's on the end of the smaller, smaller picture. They don't, he doesn't have that up there right there. If you can show the bigger view of the smaller.
Fire truck with twenty-five feet with radius of forty feet. Which is by New York State Code, I believe. Now, and this is, this is just a proposed. I mean, if we want to do a cul-de-sac or something slightly different than what's laid out here, we can. But this was for the code book.
Yeah, I think, you know, we probably would love to see a cul-de-sac.
That's a great one.
And for flower too.
Every place turned with snow, it's not.
Be tight, plus there's some other questions regarding the road, or any of it.
Going in.
Before we get to the turnaround.
One of the things that we also discussed is, we're gonna build this road up to Townsback and pave it. Um, right, before I go through designing a whole road for this, I wanna make sure I can do this subdivision the way I want to. Because I don't wanna waste my client's money.
Yeah, we get that. Tom, did you ever consider the question as far as, uh, the, the lots?
I, I understood it to be, um, a duplex for two acres, is it, you can have multiples, as we have two acres for duplex?
Could, could I jump in?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're kinda hoping.
So, first, first thing is, um, a planning board in general does not have jurisdiction to interpret the code. That, that's the code enforcement officer. And if an applicant or property owner disagrees with the determination of the code enforcement officer, they can appeal that. And that goes to the ZB, EPA. Your job is, once an application is, is accepted as in compliance with the zoning code, you review it as subdivision, site plan, specialty use permit. So when you ask Tom, Tom might have an opinion, but it's really the code enforcement officer that answers that. So that'll have to get addressed by the code enforcement officer.
And I have, I have emailed Steve. Being that sorry to cut you off, that it would be acceptable to do it.
That's okay, I'd like to see the email, and by the way, I'm sitting in for the regular planning board attorney. He will be back. In February. Have some thoughts on this, because. Certainly to, to protect this board as well as to be fair to the applicant. If you do have an email, whether that constitutes a formal determination of Building Department, that should be reviewed. The, I serve as county attorney, certainly the code enforcement officer did not review that with me. I do represent the Building, Building Department exactly two adjacent in, in your land use regulations. The other thing I wanted to bring up, so the board is aware, is, and I did speak to. Access road, as I understand it, is going over what is proposed to be the access road for the town to get into stormwater facilities associated with a lot of use segments.
This is the storm parcel here, just right here?
Yes.
And so currently the town has an easement to come in, and that would not be?
Well, in point of fact, um, in full disclosure, are you Mr. Bowden?
I am, sir.
We've, we've never spoken, Andy Gilchrist, and I represented, um, lot, forty-three wall limits.
Mr. Bear.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the easement that was executed for that road, truth be told, I drafted that, I put that together for Mr. Bear and Mr. Patron. They, they still have that, they're in the process of formally dedicating stormwater facilities to the town. In conjunction with that dedication, they will be proposing to dedicate and assign that easement to the town. So the town would have rights over that road, so the board should be aware of that and coordinate with. Your Building Department, your Highway Department, your Water Department, because that would be the accessway to storm pond parcel, which presumably will need to be town-owned and maintained going forward in conjunction with block view. So just make sure there's that coordination.
And my thoughts, Mr. Gilchrist, and speaking to Mr. Bear and Mr. Patron also, is, um. With us paving the road, we have to plow it for, uh, for the, the units and whatnot, so, I mean, it's kind of a win-win for.
It should be, but just, it, it makes sense for both parties to coordinate so that everyone understands. Put the proposal in.
And that was brought up before as well, that's why we've gone with trying to pave it to Townsback.
That, that's fine, and if you've coordinated there and Mr. Patron, that they still do have an easement over that road, ultimately it's proposed to be dedicated to the town, um, in conjunction with block view. Doesn't sound like there's any objection to the proposal from Bear and Patron.
No, no, no.
I would imagine there would be. And again, full disclosure, I continue to represent forty-three wall, we don't have project, and, and we will be proposing to, to dedicate all of that to the town shortly. So I just raised that to make sure that there's appropriate coordination there, but that's.
Yes.
Are they going, are they going wetland?
No.
It's edited.
So the eight acres that we're proposing to subdivide. Along this line, I can sort of where the original, coming back into this original access. It's this. This is where, this, this right here, where the duplexes sit is right on this side.
Yes.
But to, to get to our cold eight acres, we gotta expand our area. Because originally, when I came the first time, my line was right here.
Right, because it was just a two acre.
It was just two acres.
So is this, is this wetland or buffer?
No, buffer.
The wetland is further in north.
Where you see the line, it says wetland?
Right there.
Yes, this is, this in here, wetland line is this dotted line right here. So this up in here is what, we don't plan on doing anything up. We just needed more land area to get to the eight acre required.
Can we specify building of this, building of property?
Well, I think, I would have to review your code to determine what the, uh, duplex definition clearly says. Two adjacent on a single lot would each separated.
Tom, a parcel can have wetlands on it, you can't have to stay out of it, you can have twenty acres of wetlands on your property.
It can be used for density.
Oh, you have adequate building.
Yeah.
And he isn't going into wetland, he's going into the buffer area.
I'm not even in the buffer.
And he's not, and he's not, he's, he's lying in front of buffer, but he's not gonna do anything.
Well, that was a question we had no ask meeting, because the, the septic system went to the buffer, but now it doesn't, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Who's responsible for maintaining the septic system?
Uh, would be the landowner, the private septic, so whoever.
Yeah, I maintain the ones at Lockview. I have a home, toilet seat here, and, uh. I got, I have a, my model mall used to own stone portable toilet and a stone septic, so we have expensive now.
Are you developing land for this job? Or those other?
To myself, yeah.
Did you intend to rent the, correct?
Yeah, correct, that's what I figured, I mean, I do.
Is there any flexibility in the number of units that you, sure?
Minor changes. As far as square footage is concerned?
And how many are you putting in? I mean, do you want to bring?
There's four duplexes.
Four.
So that's actually eight houses.
No.
Sure.
Well, duplex, is it a half a house?
It's like a townhouse.
Yeah.
Two bedrooms, nothing large, two bedrooms, I don't, I don't wanna have, you know, a bunch of kids, a bunch of, a lot of people on the.
Similar to the size like the ones at the pasture? Over in, in the three more there? On Williams Road?
I do not know the, uh, something.
Is there gonna be like a homeowners association for responsibility on the parking areas and the, um, septic systems and things like that, or?
I'm gonna own it, so, so.
Okay. You're basically renting the.
And if I was to ever sell this parcel, it would be sold with the Lockview apartments together. She's gonna jam a lot in small place.
Trying to jam too much in.
How many, how many apartments over there now?
Twelve?
No.
What's the current apartment?
How many, how many apartments are over Lockview now?
Uh, there's twenty-nine total, on that side, there's, there's four, there's a, uh, a four. We have one to propose to two more buildings, or three, three actually. Originally, like, the, uh, the thirty-two in Kinley Way, but, uh, it didn't seem like, like the board would be favorable towards that, so we kind of revert it to this plan, you know, within, uh, within your legal guidelines and specifications.
Okay, we'd like, okay, I would like to get, we'd like to see the email from Tracy.
I think it was for sales.
Units in this particular area. Tracy, I'm doing a little more research. Other members in board, please.
My question is, we go back to the old drawing before this, it had eight apartment, two buildings, it would be sixteen. That equals what you're proposing now, but you're using up more space than if you only had two, two of them. You had, you asked you for twenty-four, which went into the slope of the back of the easement. Which is very, I mean, obviously you're trying to correct for that. But why can't, why can't you go to apartments and only use two of them, because you got the same number of people coming?
Not, not seeing the total, but the three. I would prefer to. I would prefer to put two forty meter structures, but it didn't seem like the, the board was, uh, would be favorable on that, so we kind of reconfigured our.
The total number has gone down.
Yeah, and we were going for twelve originally, so we did, we did, uh.
Eight bedrooms. Eight bedroom apartment. That's what the drawing says.
Right, and there was three of them, and so that.
Four.
That's twelve.
That's twelve. And so now we have.
No.
Eight of them.
So we did. Downsize the, you know, our, our plans already.
There's a running here.
All right.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Sorry, not you, see, I didn't.
Please do.
I'm sorry. At this point, not that far into the architectural budget.
Okay.
And hopefully the duplex has to be sprinkled, we are proposing three new fire hydrants along here as well.
Okay, now what about the roadway going from, uh, the new development there?
From base of Lockview, you stop signs at Lockview.
Yeah, and it's. And has to be much wider and.
And that was my initial concern, right there where Lockview meets McKinley, the right inside going in is already retention pond for Lockview. So you'd be widening it into a buffer for, for, sort of, for the stormwater retention.
Thank you.
To the left side of the pine trees Dave talks about, it's right on the edge of the pond. I mean, you don't really have any room to work with. Past that section, it goes to the actual pond spillway. There's a liability, if that blows out, is it gonna take a?
And I don't believe it's actually a stormwater pond, it's just a pond that was created there.
Right, but if it blows out, and it's a town road.
Well, that's why we would build it to step, to make sure it would be okay.
Well, it's only one, and then you cut to the parking lot, and if you're gonna have a two lane road, the sound code now is twelve foot driving lanes, two foot shoulders. You're gonna be taking all the parking on the left side, and then you'd be right up to the apartments on the right side.
I will, um, make a note here that our, our design should go from, our, our road design should go from where these duplexes are gonna sit all the way to where Lockview comes out, so we're making sure everything up to Lockview taken care of.
We have two stop signs up.
It's gonna remain a private road, though, we'll still, we're not gonna dedicate it to the, uh, to the town, so we're still.
We want to ask, we're still.
Yeah, we're still liable for maintenance.
Mm-hmm, yes, you're looking. Put it to the back to that, that. Pond, there was two ponds in the deep in the back underneath Lockview, packed by pine trees.
We've been plowing that road all winter for you, so.
Yes, I noticed that today, thank you. Okay.
You did just say?
Thank you, Stephen, floor?
Uh, I don't know, I, uh.
Thank you, Stephen, floor?
Uh, I don't know, I, uh.
I'm gonna try and.
Maybe cutting into that easement, yeah. Yeah, that's right, that easement.
So, this easement is going to be moved over here where the town is already accessing.
Well, Mr. Gilchrist is talking about the easement, not the new easement that you're proposing, which I think, I mean, I'm all in favor of that, because the current easement expects you to do, the new easement is the driveway in, in front of the apartments. And that's great, I mean, that's great for the fire apartments.
It was my understanding that. Old in place, and I gave Mr. Bear the apartment back to me.
Okay. So it's part of this, the relation, considered part of this development?
Do you have a question?
Uh, is it R two that, uh, has, allows two buildings on one block? Two buildings on one line, where is that? Because in our code somewhere, there, there's an allowance for two separate buildings on one line. I can't remember which, which zone that's in.
Isn't it RA that you just read before?
What I've read before was just the definition of duplex. This, this is something to review with the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, well, it's in the code, I just can't remember which, which zone it's in. Because they are houses, they're not properties with two houses in them.
This is looking for, no, I got. It's not a small deviation or allowance.
In the front of the book. Well, like, the different, like, uh, one or, or two.
Correct, and that's, that's what the chairman should review with the code enforcement officer. That's his job to review that. Again, so the record's clear, I raised it, that I represent the developer on Lockview, so I'm gonna defer on any more substantive comments on that. And I'll defer to Lawrence Howard to, to take you through this one in conjunction with Tracy. If it's okay with you, I did bring, it, it would help the board, I think, when you said the old easement was abandoned and a new aligned to get back to the storm ponds. It is depicted in the easement you signed with forty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist.
So if I can give that, easement is, it actually goes over for two. Two people in a different direction, not so steep, through your lot, and then continues over where you're proposing these duplexes leading back to the storm pond parcel. That, that was negotiated between Mr. Bowden and the developers of the Lockview subdivision, and it was executed. and it was executed. And Lockview did come front of this board to get that access road's approval realigned, the realigned access road approved, and that section was then recorded as well. And when that was done, we then executed the easement. You're correct, that it was realigned.
It made more sense logistically, so you don't have.
The old was accessible.
It was way too steep for that design, so. It's my own group law accessible, man.
You gotta see it.
They're just gonna make it better.
No.
Is this sealed from right here?
Uh, my concern was, DJ, you talked about the road, that, because of that.
But it shows the map.
Okay, you want to make copies?
And you can make copies more. Send. Send through the file.
Great, Neil, what to do, you guys?
Just so I'm in an understanding, really what's holding up right now is making sure that we're allowed to do all four of these units on the eight acre parcel. Because everything else has been, been closed, and I, once we, once we get that last issue right, we can start working on an actual formal design for like that. I don't wanna do that, so is that the? And everything like that. I don't wanna do that, so is that the only?
Close. No, the new ones. You know, always a busy.
Did you drive with no?
This is driveway in front of everybody.
You ready?
The bottom one, which is half the distance between the road and duplex?
Because I'm not talking about.
Says gravel drive?
Yes, that's the current gravel drive that's in there.
And just to the bottom of that, that, there's another line that runs.
Yes, that's the, those are the easement lines, there's one to the north, or one above and one below is a gravel drive, that would be where the.
Yeah, so the one, the one right away there touches both of the septic fields, and the other edge of it is, how far from the, the front of that duplex number four?
I would have to, I would have to look at it.
It just hits, just jamming a lot in a small spot. The fact that both edges of the road really approach on either the building or the septic.
I can move them and get a new condition. Or prove that.